Welcome everybody to tonight's curriculum committee meeting. When we stand, call the meeting in order if we stand for the pledge allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. McCloswell will have a rule call, I see.
Mrs. Feis.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Mrs. Janasik.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy. Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Christensen. Seven members present.
Thank you, sir. At this time, any public comments on tonight's agenda items on our curriculum committee? No call-ins, no one forward. Okay, at this time, Mr. Scalzo, curriculum committee chair, would you please, you want to start this meeting?
Dr. Walsh, do you want to begin first?
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Scalzo. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the board for making this time. We don't often get the opportunity to have the board focus exclusively on curriculum and instruction or education-related issues, particularly in the, you know, the height of the summer vacation, summer break. But there's a lot of good things happening, all of which relates back to our strategic plan. And so the agenda for tonight is all informational presentations to give the board a bit of an education on things that are happening and how it relates back to our strategic plan. We're going to cover three areas for your consideration and edification tonight. We're going to talk about math intervention. Again, we were here together back in the spring talking about math intervention programming at Neil Armstrong, and we're going to kind of close that conversational loop, talking about the curriculum programs that will be happening there as well as at IMS. We also are going to hear from the IMS principal on the schedule change committee that had been meeting throughout the spring and some of their recommendations, one of the big recommendation that they're going to try and pilot this year. And we're also going to hear about a program, Invention Land, and what role we think that'll play in next year, in a pilot year, and moving beyond that, how we'd like to see it play out in the future. All of this, again, it's important to emphasize, this kind of falls back down to the anchor for us has been the strategic plan, and specifically the bucket of curriculum and instruction goals. That was the biggest bucket in the plan, and there's a lot that we're going to try and achieve over five years. Tonight, you're going to hear about three baby steps, if you will, on that, into that bucket. So let's start with math programming, math intervention. With us tonight are administrators who have been really intimate with this topic, and so I'm going to give the microphone over to these folks to carry the rest of the presentation forward.
All right, I want to thank the board again for the support in hiring the NAMS position for an intervention specialist in the sixth grade. It's been a long time coming and a need for more instructional time there for students who need additional time, so I want to thank you for taking that action in the spring. I appreciate that effort for our students, and the sixth grade teachers are grateful as well to have that time. What I'd like to share today with you is an overview of the curriculum, the programming that we plan to use in this intervention pilot. And it came to us from, the sixth grade teachers had used some components of the Maneuvering the Middle Core for core instruction, but they also had an intervention piece. And as we started to look at different products that were available, we really found that this was something that could meet that need in sixth grade. Also, in looking at the Academy of Math at IMS, we thought that this program also could fill a need there for those students, and so we'll be piloting it in grades six through eight this year. This is a tier two, will you go down one more? A tier two instruction. And what that means is, this is for students who did not respond to the Core. So students have a period of math class, forty to fifty minutes, depending on the building, and this is an extra forty to fifty minutes of math where it is remediating skills that they did not gain mastery from, from that teaching in the core instruction. So we're going to be using a skill-based approach to target these skills. And we've talked about in the past about how we address unfinished learning. It's, we don't just start the year and review the grade before to try to catch everybody up. We address those skills as they come up in the scope and sequence of the current school year. So they will be working on those gaps that are just in time, and they will correlate with what is happening in that core instruction. These will be small groups, and even within the small groups, it could be four to ten students within a group, it's going to get even smaller within the room. The teacher will be working with probably two to four students at a time, and then reverse, while the other students are working on something independently, and then, so there's even smaller groups within that small group. Those groups will be leveled. The Maneuvering the Middle program breaks things into three different skill levels, and those can be flexible. So in one unit, you may be at a level one in a skill, but in the next particular unit, you might be a three. So it changes based on the student's need in that particular unit. And Maneuvering the Middle calls them clusters. I, from a curriculum perspective, use the word "unit," but we'll use the words "unit" and "cluster" simultaneously when discussing this program. And what's nice is, they have built-in progress monitoring tools. I will say, this program was built by teachers, and it makes sense. I spent the day today with our interventionists, Jennifer McDonough at NAMS, Jeff Lewis at IMS, and we had a fantastic, worked together for a couple hours today, and we were all just nodding our heads like, this makes sense, this is well-organized, well-done, it integrates with Schoology, everything that is a Google product, like a Google form or a Google doc, we can make copies and customize, so we are really pleased with the program as we dive in.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
So how often will intervention take place for a typical student, let's say in a week's time, just so parents have an idea?
Will you skip down to the, it's a little bit different in both buildings, will you go down two slides for me? Yes. So at NAMS, the students at NAMS were identified based on how they performed on the PSSA. We did have some students who opted out of the PSSA last year, so we also had map scores. We had two pieces that we could look at there. And course grades, sometimes it comes down to when you're looking at a student who's on that cusp. In that building, they will be on a six-day rotation, so they will have, if they have reading and math intervention, they'll have three days of reading and then three days of math. Three days of reading, three days of math. If they only have math, they'll have three days of foreign language, three days of math, three days of foreign language, and it goes in a six-day rotation. Will you move down to the IMS slide? IMS works just a, oh, thank you very much. Are you, are you Vanahing over that? Oh, it's Doug. Thanks, Doug. So in IMS, it's just a little different. The students were identified using the PSSA scores. We looked at below basic students, but also some basic students who are on the low end of that scoring. They will have it every other day. So in addition to their regular math class, they will have the period of the Academy of Math every other day. They still have the flexibility to take things like foreign language, band, orchestra and chorus. So NAMS is operating on a six-day rotation, IMS is offering on an even odd day rotation.
Thank you.
Mrs. Figaroli, I have a question.
Sure.
And I don't know if this goes to you or Mr. Patterson, but this seems to be a change from sixth grade to go to a six-day schedule. When did that happen at NAMS?
It happened this year for the purposes of the remediation program and the enrichment programs that she'll be talking about in a little bit. So every student will have that period of their day, and it's really, that's the only period that's operating on the six-day rotation. So the kids, every day at school, when they walk in, on the announcements, it'll be, this will be day one, two, three, four, five, six. And I did it for scheduling purposes to make it even throughout the year, so they're going to have three days. Mrs. Figaroli talked a little bit about it, but basically there's four different groups they can be in. So if they are proficient in both subject areas, they will be in three days of the enrichment, Invention Land, and three days of foreign language, which gives them a half a year of foreign language and a half a year of Invention Land. If they are deficient in one area, they will get that area of remediation plus the foreign language class, and then if they're deficient in both areas, they'll have, all six days will be filled with three days of remediation in each area. It is a little bit different scheduling-wise, honestly, it's been complicated, I'm making it work figuring it all out, but it is a little bit different than what we've done in the past. It doesn't really impact anything as far as the building-wide schedule goes, it's literally just for that period for those kids.
My point, sorry guys, I'm not seeing you on the screen, I'm only seeing Mrs. Figaroli's presentation. So I apologize if I'm interrupting too quickly, but my concern is parents are just learning about this right now.
Yeah, and I'll be sending more information out Thursday when I release schedules that explains this to them.
Because this is brand-new, so if you've never, if you've already had a kid at NAMS, this is a new sixth-grade schedule compared to what it was before. That's what I want parents to understand, I noticed it immediately. I want parents to understand that this is all new, the board is just finding out about this, at this meeting also.
When we, I mean, when we talked about the proposal, this was included within it to do the rotation and everything, but, I mean, when I send out, I send out examples of sched, anybody who's been at NAMS before, obviously anybody new to NAMS, this is just going to be what it is, anybody who's been there before knows the scheduling documents and everything that I send out, and there will be examples of what a schedule will look like, everything will be included, I give a sample, actually printed schedule for everybody, that will all go out to parents on Thursday before schedules released this Friday.
Okay, I just want, I just want parents to understand now that they're going to be a lot more like IMS on a six-day rotation, so kids need to remember day one, day two, even odd, however you guys want to call this.
I don't, it's only one period of a student's day is going to be that six-day rotation. It's not, like, the Unified Arts isn't impacted by that, there's still nine-week rotations, only that period, and it's literally just for scheduling purposes, instead of doing days of the week where it would be uneven, you'd have three days of remediation in one and two days of the other. I thought it made more sense to keep it across the board, and that way we can also maintain the half-year of foreign language for all the students, so they're able to get all four languages in, they're getting four and a half weeks of each language. And for the Invention Land program, it also works because it's based on a semester, the program that we're running, so it will allow us to, for the students that are in that program to get the full experience of that program too by dividing it. Basically, they're getting a half a year of whatever they're getting of the four programs, whether it be the two remediations, the Invention Land, or the foreign language, everything is based on a half a year, we've just divided it in three-day sections to, because you can get more done. Every other day, to me, it might work great at IMS, I just, I like the idea of having the three days in a row where you can get in some continuity and things like that right now, so. And it's honestly looking, I mean, the change is going to happen when sixth grade moves up, so it wasn't that far-fetched to kind of start to look at it that way and start to plan for the future as well.
Okay, thank you.
Will you advance the slide, Doug? You can go to nine. So just a brief overview for how the program works. It is very much dependent on a routine for students, and students understanding that routine, because when the teacher is working with the small group, they need to be uninterrupted. The students have to know the routine to be able to function while they're working on that work independently. So it starts, and we've talked about number sense before when I talk about math, that is so important that the kids have the opportunity to talk about numbers, talk about how they have solved problems, hear other ways that students are solving problems, and justify their reasoning. So every period will start with five to 10 minutes. What's nice is that the program comes with a number sense notebook. So it tell, they know, the number sense, the number talk is aligned with what the students are going to be working on in class, it has prompts for the teacher to know how to prompt the students' thinking, how to prompt their questioning, and push them towards justifying the answer. So that's what students do right when they walk in the door. Will you need to move to the next slide for me, please? The formative assessment piece is huge. So at the beginning of each cluster unit, same concept, they take a pre-assessment, and you know by the students' work on that assessment whether they're going to be a one, a level one, two, or three in that particular skill, and in that sub-skill within the cluster. So then they know, as they move through each of those skills, which level of activities the students are going to be working on, when they're at the small group and when they're working independently. And then at the end of each assessment, we do, you do the same concepts on the assessments, not the exact same assessment, but then you can see how did they level at the end. So the teachers will have a spreadsheet where they can compare, did the pre-assessment student was a level one, did the post-assessment, hoping to see that student rise to a level two or a level three? And what's nice is, those progress monitoring sheets came prepared for us with all of the units, all of the subskills, all we have to do is enter in our students' names, and the principals and I will be able to keep a pulse on the monitoring of the effectiveness of these courses.
So it's very structured and there's continuity for the whole program in itself?
Yes, there's a very, very structured routine.
So if a student is rather proficient in one particular cluster, I'm assuming they'll just be still honing their skills in that particular cluster for that day?
Yeah, we talked about that today, that was a question that Mr. Lewis asked. We could, they could be, they could be in a level three, and if you're, if they're sitting at the small table and you're seeing that they're proficient in that level-three skill, we have other options for the students. We did some training in the spring on Math Workshop, so the students have access to different games they can play, we do have access to Exact Path, and so if a student is excelling in that area, when they took the map growth assessment, they're going to get a path that is unique to them, so they could utilize that at that point. But it is possible that a student, although they've been flagged for this course and have needs, that's not to say they don't have strengths as well.
Right, right.
So that is something that we will be prepared for.
Okay, so they could potentially maybe go back to something that was earlier in the year that they struggled on and maybe improve on that?
Absolutely. And with a group that's small, and that knowledge in front of you of where they were in each skill, it makes it really easy for the teacher to be able to either enrich or circle back to something that, you know, maybe at the post-assessment on the last unit, they only got to a two. So you might want to circle back to that skill, knowing that in this particular unit, they are proficient.
Okay, that makes sense, because I understand it can be difficult if you're trying to teach multiple units, but with that small group, it makes sense.
You're juggling a lot of different levels within the group.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you also, really quick, just explain to the parents too, that this is teacher-led instruction?
This is teacher-led instruction.
And this isn't, this isn't going to be something where, you know, here's a computer screen, we're going to plop you in front of it for 45 minutes?
They have, and if any, and if any parent who is enrolled in the course would ever like to see the digital activities, it's not like Exact Path where it's computer adaptive. There are, for each cluster and each skill, they are digital activities, but they are interactive slides. So students may be dragging and dropping things, students may be typing into the slides. It's not the same as a computer adaptive program where you're getting tutorials and things like that. You're actually manipulating numbers and using the concepts. And what's nice is the digital activities are tiered as well.
So you're engaged, not just staring at the screen?
Absolutely, yes, you're interacting with the technology. But it's nice, the colors are, yep, gold, green, and blue, so if you're, the, all of the activities that you're doing at the small group that are blue are for the level-one group. All of the slides have a blue column along them, so they know, you know, you know what color you're in for that particular skill, and it's going to change. So it doesn't mean because you've come to this instruction that, you know, you're in the same group all year. It's going to be fluid based on how you perform on those pre-assessments. And I think we've talked about this, what's nice about the number talks, the way that that book is set up, when the teacher starts to see some common errors when the students are talking about the problems, they can really make a note of some of the misconceptions that they're seeing, some error analysis that the students are having collectively, and use those things to guide those conversations about numbers. So that number talk is going to be really, really important for engaging the students in explaining their thinking and pushing their thinking. Next slide, Doug. Some keys to success, some things that we really have to have in place to make sure that this program is successful. Advanced preparation of materials is going to be critical. I want to thank Stacy Klosek, our administrative assistant, she has been wonderful in helping prepare the materials. The teachers will receive their materials ready to go, as far as all the colored cardstock copying, all of their, all of the materials that they need, everything that is digital is well-organized for them, it integrates into their Schoology. We're going to start working on our Schoology pages together, so that we have those materials accessible and ready to go for the students. We're going to have to collaborate with the core instructors, that is critical. So as we start mapping in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade map, we need to come to a clear consensus on the scope and the sequence of the skills that are happening in those core classrooms, because if teacher A is teaching one topic and teacher B is teaching another topic, when they come to the interventionist and they haven't had that core instruction, that student is not, in that point, they need to be, if they haven't seen the material, it's not review, it's brand-new material. So this pairs nicely with the curriculum mapping initiative. So sixth, seventh, and eighth grade really need to, in our first mapping, a couple mapping sessions, articulate that scope and sequence, and communicate with the interventionist the order that the skills are moving in, so that they know, and they're going to be moving in from cluster to cluster in and out, but we will follow the skills that are being taught within the core class.
Then, you also have a, do you have a backup plan if, let's say, a student's in intervention for some reason, it's just not working, you're using your growth tool to see if they're actually growing, showing growth, right, to see if they're actually doing better, and if they're not, then what's the next move? If intervention, for some reason, I don't know what the reason would be, something's just not clicking, something's not working, what would we do next?
In a multi-tiered system of support, the next step would be tier three. We do not have a tier-three instructor, but if we're starting to see a child who is not the core instruction, they're not getting it. Tier two, not getting it. We really need to look at having a conversation with, whether it be a learning support teacher or Mr. Dr. Minch, Ms. Dr. Shu, you know, is this, this particular concept, or is this an issue that is larger than that? Because tier three is very, very explicit. We should not have more than 3% to 5% of our students who really need tier-three instruction. So that, that instruction can happen, but they have, in the tier-two instruction, but they, for them to be able to move through, they need to really be focusing on the core instruction. So it's really a collaborative conversation at that point with, what is the homeroom teacher seeing as well? You know, what are, do we have this student in the right place at the right time? And it can happen, just like the student who comes and already knows everything, there are going to be those outlying performances that we're going to have to have individual conversations about.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Figaroli, these are all taught, if it's reading, we just talked about math, so if it's the math intervention, it is taught by a math teacher, correct?
The sixth grade, yes, it, in, it could be, a sixth grade, do you want to answer that one, Kenny, regarding certification?
Yeah, I'll jump in. So all three math teachers were willing to take on as their extra sixth period, one of the remediation classes, so they would have two groups based on the three-day cycle. So each of the three core math teachers will work with some of their own kids again in the extra period, and then the teacher who bid into the position for the math is math-certified, actually, and she's been in, working today, she was in the building, they've been getting things together, working together to get all this going, so they are math people, math-certified, ready to go, excited. I've honestly not seen this much summer buzz around a program or anything in a while, since I've been here, really. So I think having them, seeing them all in the building, I've seen every one of them, all four teachers that'll be doing the math remediation were in my building in the last two, three weeks, doing things around this program, working with Mandy, getting everything set up. So they are math-certified, and they're all excited to get the support that honestly they've been asking for too, so I think that's a big piece of it.
Correct. And Ms. Sutton, what about seventh and eighth grade?
Yes, also math-certified.
So they may not be the math teachers, but they have a math certification?
It is not their team math teacher, but it is a math teacher.
Okay.
Seventh and eighth grade, you, it is common for a K-six certification to be an elementary certification, and if you have that certification, you can teach all subjects within that range of K to six. But once you get to seventh grade and on, they are content-specific certifications. So any teacher teaching a seventh or eighth grade math course, science course, social studies course, they have to be certified in that particular content area. But the sixth-grade interventionist that we placed in this position, who will likely be moving to IMS when we make that move, she is a certified math teacher, she is not just an elementary K to six certified teacher, she does have that content specialization.
Thanks, Mrs. Figaroli, that's the explanation I was looking for for parents, just some clarification that everybody has math.
And we have outstanding elementary educators in the sixth grade who are, who are teaching not only the core math, but also wanted some small groups of their students to teach this intervention program too as well, which we're very grateful for, because that makes the groups even smaller.
I just wanted to mention one thing, so the teachers that are coming in, they don't have to come in during this time, correct? They are coming in on their own will. I just want to give a shout-out to them, thank you so much for doing everything that you're doing. That's time away from your family, and time from other things in your life, and you're coming in here, and you're putting that effort in. Every one of those hours that you put in is for all of, all of the kids of Bethel Park, including my own kids, so thank you so much for coming in and doing that, I appreciate that from the bottom of my heart, and as an educator, thank you.
Agreed, an outstanding group of educators in general in the district, but they took the lead on blessing this product for us to start looking at and piloting, and they've been great at getting the momentum going for us to use it. Any other questions about the maneuvering the middle?
So the, the board will get, will give you a progress report as things are moving through the year, by the end of the year, give you a full update on it, and if it, it will also work its way through Curriculum Council as well, so that perhaps by the end of the year, we can have a program adoption. Related to that, I think we heard about the sixth-period day and students who don't need the remediation, because they were proficient. We have some enrichment opportunities, and we want to talk to the board about a pilot with the Invention Land curriculum.
The Invention Land Education Course, if you will skip to, oh, wait, he gives, you're fine, I can kind of give a background. I don't know if anyone is familiar with Invention Land as a company. They are out at RIDC Park, they've been there for a very long time, but essentially, they are an invention factory. They, people bring their ideas for, to make an invention, they bring that invention all the way through the design process, help people bring that product to market. So I have, I have worked in this program before, whereas I was new to Maneuvering the Middle, I have used the Invention Land Education Program in my former experiences. So this, essentially, this course simulates a student becoming an inventor. And so, like Kenny described, this is going to be a piece of that, that one period a day that is a six-day rotation. So it will be an enrichment course, and students who have not, who are not receiving the math or the ELA remediation course will be taking this course. And we, this will be all low-tech-making, at this point, in this, in the sixth-grade course, we will be using low-tech materials like cardboard and hot glue when the students make their inventions. If students, if, it could go farther than that, but at this point, that will be, we are prepared with all of those materials for the students to invent with low-tech-making materials. This course also brings a lot of career exploration opportunities in, as they're working through the design process, and I'll walk you through that, of all the different careers that exist in fabrication, whether that be designing, digital designing, creating things, whether it's computer science, if you're learning to code, there are a lot of opportunities that come up for the kids to see career opportunities, and it's, it's just a really nice side piece of this course that, for students to see themselves in maybe a career that they had never been exposed to before. You can't be what you can't see, so I really love that the students get to see the different career opportunities here. In addition to the grade-six teachers who will be teaching this, we are going to train, it will be two days of training, we are also going to train the tech ed instructors in grades five through eight. There are more materials in this platform than this sixth-grade enrichment course could ever use. So we really, for longevity of the potential for this program, we want those tech ed instructors to see what else is in here that we can use in our programs to give our, keep moving towards the 21st century in those courses as well. So the focus this year will be in that grade-six course, but the opportunities are there. We have a school-wide license that includes sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. It's an IMS license that they have granted to us as of, knowing that that's our future configuration. So we will be training other teachers. Next slide, please. The nine-step method of inventing, I'll briefly walk you through it, you can go to the next slide, Doug. So the first three steps, the students begin the class by thinking about maybe problems So the first three steps, the students begin the class by thinking about maybe problems they have, maybe a problem that they're, someone in their family has, something that they feel like needs a solution. And they look at what they could possibly invent to, to solve that problem. They also learn about copywriting your idea. So that's really stage one, is what is, what is the problem that I want to solve? How do I protect my idea? The next step is then they research their idea, and sometimes this is interesting for kids when they find the product already exists. So if the product already exists, do I have a way to make it different? Do I have a way to make it better? But if at that point, you can't do either of those things, you're going to go back to the drawing board. That, that solution already exists. So it starts that thinking cycle of iteration where you may not have the right answer the first time you try. So they do some research on that. Then when they find their idea and they know that it is not exactly out there as they want to do it, they start brainstorming on how they want to solve that problem and what that could look like. Can you move forward for me, Doug? And steps four and through six are really the, the really, really hands-on piece of this where they're making their design. So they start with sketching. They're just, you don't have to be an amazing artist to sketch, but it is important that you start to sketch those things out and you get your ideas visual out in front of you and that you are sharing with someone. This course is best done in groups, in small groups. They really encourage that students collaborate, that is a great skill for the workforce. So after they've decided on their design, they've sketched it out, they start to build it. That's where things get messy and wonderful, and the cardboard comes out and the hot glue, and you would be surprised at other things that kids bring in to make their own inventions. What I've seen that has been wonderful as this course went on was that this is where we really started to see a real-world use for the tools we had. When we first were introduced to this course in my current, in my former experience, we had laser engravers and 3D printers, and they weren't necessarily being used for curricular application. Kids were making keychains and fun little things, but when we got to this step five, kids could really start to create what they may need to make their invention. So the expectation for the sixth grade this year is low-tech, but it has a lot of possibility along the way that we can start really creating the tools and creating the items that we need to make these inventions. Six, step six is you're drafting, you're really fine-tuning that prototype and getting it to where it works, and you are satisfied that it solves the problem that you were attempting to solve. The last step is, is a lot of fun for the kids, it's the storytelling. Believe it or not, you, and maybe you do know this, but package design is a huge career. If you've ever seen, like, your child gets an LOL doll or the Bark Box or things you're getting, a lot of thought goes into package design and why things are designed that way. So it's important, and the students spend time designing a package that appeals to the customer. They have to be able to communicate your idea. If you have a good idea and you can't sell it, that's a problem. So the students really work hard to prepare a pitch so that they can share their idea and try to sell it. And that is, putting it all together is that final piece, is the pitch. So imagine the Shark Tank when you come with your idea and you're trying to sell it. You can actually skip two slides for me, Doug, and go to nine. This was really my favorite part of the course when we did it, and that is when the students do the pitch. So our students can compete in a regional contest at Inventionland. So we will select up to three groups of students that can go out and pitch in that contest there. So to decide who moves on to regionals, we will have a local contest within the district. So that would be in April. We will get together some community members, some people that work with us, and if board members wanted to participate, and we like to help the kids prepare for their pitch at the end of the year. So we give them feedback on things they can do better, ask them some hard questions to make them really think about maybe things they overlooked in their design, and then we will send on children to the Regional Inventors Class in a contest in, they're usually in middle of May. There are, that is our plan for the sixth-grade course, for the enrichment course. But the reason that we want to train tech ed is because there's a lot of long-term options. And something that you'll hear often in STEAM education is low floor, high ceiling. It means our point of entrance is really easy to accomplish. Hot glue, cardboard, no problem, we can launch that. But there, this can grow astronomically into much more high-tech things and a much more cross-curricular experience. So these are three of the modules that are also included that we could use in other classes, and I'd really like for us to explore this year. The 3-2-1 Production Resources walks students through doing a complete infomercial. So it teaches them how to do storyboarding, media production, post-production. I think it could be a great tool in the Media Center at IMS. The next one are the Maker Technology Modules, and I think these are really advantageous for our teachers to just have a refresher on and, and see some of the innovative ways that these tools can be used in the classroom. So that's 3D printing, laser cutting, vinyl cutting, coding, electronics, and stop-motion animation, and Ms. Sutton and I have been really in awe of the Maker Space Design for IMS and the plans for that new space. And there's also some potential for it to move into the business departments. I judged the regional contest this year because I was, I didn't have any schools in it, I won't be able to judge anymore, but what one school had did was they were working with their business department and the kids designed websites to advertise their products. So you brought in a whole nother level of skills for website design, marketing campaigns. There were students who were actually selling, the, the students who had made a whole innovative design of a scrunchie that doesn't break your hair, they were selling them in their school off of their website. So the course is, as is, is a great opportunity for our students to engage in design thinking. But by training tech ed, I think that through this pilot year, we can really see what type of options are available to us within this course and in the IMS long-term curriculum programming.
So by running these, by running math intervention, Inventionland now, over the next year or so, we will be kind of future-proofing ourselves, right? Maybe you can kind of explain how this, like, just all comes together? So, because, you know, we're looking at NAMS, we're looking at IMS kind of separately. I, I think if you can just quickly explain what we're doing, like, for that time period where sixth grade comes over, we have, you know, the Elementary Center will be there and we're future-proofing, if you can just...
Yeah, absolutely. So the way that the departments are set up, we do have middle-school departments. So we have a middle-school, well, technology education is K through 12. So those tech ed teachers, when we have department time, they are always working together. So right now, when we have department time, the sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade tech ed teachers will be able to have time to not only train together on this course, but also have time to talk about, what are you trying, what are you using? So that department time is very critical. Same thing with the middle school. There is a middle-school math department. So those, the teachers that will be teaching the intervention at IMS, although one is at NAMS right now, they are already collaborating together, knowing that the future of the program is sixth through eight. And so that department time is critical for us to allow those teachers, you know, common planning time is nice, but when you're not in the same building, you really have to rely on department time to carve out that time and make that collaboration a priority.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question that I don't think we talked about, so this is going to, see if I can...
Zinger?
Zing you. We, at the introduction of tonight's Curriculum Committee meeting, I talked about the connection to the strategic plan, and in the course of your presentations, I heard problem-solving, I heard a little bit about communication requirements. So could you highlight for us 21st-century skills that you think would come from the Inventionland curriculum?
Absolutely. The, the interesting thing about the Inventionland course is that the teacher is a facilitator. The teacher is not coming in every day, there's great materials to guide them through the lesson, but once the students have chosen their design, you're facilitating all of these different projects within the classroom. Everybody's doing something else. You really have to manage your learning. The tools are there to guide you and scaffold you, but you have to be able to regulate yourself as you move through those levels of the design process. Self-management is self-regulation is definitely something, those executive functioning skills that kids need in the workforce. They're going to fail, being fully honest, when they, meaning when they design something, there's, there's a very strong chance that the first time they design it, it's going to fail. And that can be very, that's a frustrating experience. They have to go back. Why didn't it work? What can I do to make it better? You know, and even when you get feedback from someone and you, you know, it's easy to love your own work and your own ideas, but when you have to share that idea and communicate to someone else and put yourself out there in that vulnerable place, you then have to learn how to understand what constructive criticism is and how to take that and use it to improve your design and improve your work. So it's oozing of creativity, the whole thing is just naturally oozing in creativity. You're self-managing, you're self-regulating, you're collaborating with others, you're learning that failure is an opportunity to learn, you're accepting feedback. It really is, in my 20 years of education, one of the most incredible experiences that I have seen students go through, and they thrive, they, they want to be in the course. We've even seen it have impact on attendance, that they want to be there, they want to get that project done, they want to make it better. When we ran the course at the high school, kids wanted to take the course twice. I have a different idea, I can be better this time. But it, it really brings out some intrinsic motivation because a lot of times, you know, we're a public, a public institution, we have to teach the standards, they tell us what to teach. This is a class where you pick. You pick an invention based on your interest, and so it really, it's a really powerful learning experience that I think this pilot can catalyze a lot of innovation in the district. And I think it'll be a great showcase of our students. Love to see the students compete in the regional contest and, and show off their skills.
Just to add, I mean, one of the, a couple of requests that I've got, the math remediation has been around since, for the seven and a half years I've been here, but the other piece is, a lot of people want enrichment, and kids don't get enough of it in a sense. And I think this provides that opportunity because honestly, what she just described is very much like our gifted program, to be honest. What Mr. Yost does in my building with the gifted program, and he'll be one of the teachers working with Inventionland as well, it really provides these kids an opportunity to excel in different areas, and I think that's the piece that I like the most about it. The administrators, a few were back, a few years back, got to go on a tour of Inventionland, and, and we got to walk around and, and take it all in and everything, and it was very interesting to me at the time, and then when Mandy brought her experience here and said, hey, this is something, I, I jumped at the opportunity because, like I said, I get a lot of parents wanting their kids to be pushed in different directions, and I think this can challenge the kids, and really, I want the kids to fail. I, I want them to go through that process because that's, that's, a lot of kids struggle with that now, and, and really put them in positions where they have to do all this public speaking and all these different aspects of education that are going to come with this. You have math, you have reading, you have science, social studies, everything, and all those other skills that are beyond the classroom that I think that we lose a lot of in, in our, our striving to be the best in a lot of areas, sometimes we lose those. So I think this, this program's going to offer that to a lot of kids, and a lot of kids are getting an opportunity to participate in it. So I, I really do think it meets a lot of needs and, and provides an opportunity for enrichment for a lot of students.
And my hope is that it becomes something that is not just an enrichment course, that it is something that is infused through our tech ed programs, cross-curricular opportunities for STEAM. These are skills that are not necessarily just for students who need enrichment. These, all of the students are going to need these skills for the workforce. So this met a need for us as far as an enrichment course goes, but by including others in the training, we hope that this allows an equitable access to innovation as we move into years to come.
Are there any other questions about the Inventionland pilot?
I just want to say thank you. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful program, so I cannot wait to see it, like, in action, and I'm looking forward to, you know, presentation, kind of seeing some of the kids with what they have designed. I, I think it's going to be really exciting. I just, I'm happy that our program overall, you know, our vision of critical thinking skills and problem-solving takes us to that next level, and those skills are transferable, especially when they start getting into high school with, you know, AP courses and all the other classes that are advanced. Like, this is a good, good, solid foundation for them to take those skills and run wild when they get into the high school with all of those electos that they, they have, you know, options to take whatever they would like, but it's just wonderful to see this happening earlier on.
And I, in long-term, it's going to start in kindergarten. We, you know, we're, these are the kind of things that we're considering in the building of the new space. This is creativity and critical thinking and innovation. It, it, five-year-olds are curious, and they're not afraid to fail. So you want to get them while they're young, and so we're really taking these things into consideration as we're designing the elementary, not only building, but also the programming.
So the program will drive our building, pretty much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, as I said at the end of the math intervention piece, this will be a pilot for the first year, and we'll be able to report progress and give the board a chance to see some of the outcomes. I heard Mrs. Figlioli invite members of the board, if you want to be on the Shark Tank panel, we'll, we'll let you know when that's happening. The last piece of tonight's agenda is another presentation from the middle school. Mrs. Sutton is here to talk about the findings from her Scheduling Committee. She had teachers working throughout the spring to consider alternatives to the current schedule at IMS. Here she's going to share, for the first time publicly, this year's bell schedule at IMS. Okay?
Okay, so in the spring, we had a Scheduling Committee that met through a group of teachers through the Federation and looked at the schedule that they had used in the past. They examined also other schedules from other middle schools all over to look at some options for encouraging more enrichment and remediation across the board. So we, we have special classes built in for enrichment and remediation, but we were looking for a way to offer it to all students. So throughout the spring, they decided to pilot a program for this upcoming school year. In this program, we will be implementing something called Independence Time. So in the bell schedule, that's really just a slight change. Students in the past would come to IMS and report to homeroom. Now they will report to first period, and there was a lot of conversations over the best place to fit IT time. There's pros and cons to just about whether you put it first thing, in the middle, in the end, and they, they landed on doing it after second period. So in order to implement Independence Time, we went from 42-minute periods to 41-minute periods. So in this pilot year, Independence Time will be 18 minutes. So what will happen is students will be scheduled in Independence Time classroom, and they will have the ability to sign out to different areas. So it might be something like they were in science class and they, the, the period ended, they didn't understand a concept, they would go up to the teacher and say, am I able to come down tomorrow during IT time? Or maybe the teacher says to them, you know, I see maybe you were struggling with this assignment, if you could come down and see me during IT time? They put them on a spreadsheet, and during that IT time, students are able to go to whichever area that they need some extra help, some extra time. If they are all caught up with anything, we talked about possibly bringing in our murals back, that was something that was lost during COVID, and it's something that was an exciting part of the middle-school experience. So there's an endless amount of options as to what we can do with this Independence Time. The goal, like I said, was to provide a more structured environment for enrichment and remediation for all students, and it is academically driven, but it's also in a secondary fashion to meet the needs for any clubs or activities that they have done in the past during homeroom. It just changed the schedule around slightly.
So maybe we can highlight this. So a regular ed, correct me if I'm wrong, so a regular ed student has a little bit more of an opportunity now to go to a teacher if they are struggling, because our special education students, they, they get intervention time or they get time with their special education teacher. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
So finally, let's just say, you know, that, that typical regular ed kid that doesn't get maybe extra supports, this does open the window a little bit for them to get some support.
Absolutely. And in the past, a lot of times, students were giving up lunchtime, they would eat their lunch and then, or take their lunch up to their teachers' classrooms, and our, and our teachers are amazing. They work, they work with kids wherever they can fit it into the day, but this provides an opportunity that they could go up during IT time and teachers would be able to reach out to students, or students would be able to reach out to their teachers and ask for additional help. So we, we think it's going to be a really positive experience. The Scheduling Committee, we will start one up again at the beginning of the year to revisit this pilot and also continuing it on into next year to look at integrating sixth grade into the building as well. So this is just the first time that a Scheduling Committee is meeting, but it's not going to be the last because we have a lot of changes coming in the future as well.
So if there's already a student having one math class and then they have, let's say, math intervention, we wouldn't have them do math like a third time during this, correct?
I would, I would think that would be unnecessary.
That would be, okay, because I think that they would get frustrated and that would be overload, so.
But then again, if, if they chose...
If they chose, though.
They chose.
If, if the student truly wants three times, that's on them.
Just again, I think we understand, there's flexibility in that time for the student to choose what's best for them at that time.
Perfect, thank you.
Force them anything, but there will be some... Force them anything, but there will be some recreational component or enrichment component. Again, the kid can't pick up on academics if they choose.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, wrap that one up the same way I wrapped up the other two is that we'll be able to report back to the board at the end of the year on progress, which then gives me an opportunity to say to the administrators here, first, thank you for, uh, putting these presentations together. Uh, more than that, getting us to be able to share this with the board. These, uh, baby steps, as I described them, closer to achieving our full, the fullness of the strategic plan. I'll ask though, because we haven't had this conversation yet either, is that you think about, uh, a, after tonight, how you'll measure these program success? Um, and IT time and the, um, math intervention and the, uh, Invention Land. And we're not just looking for necessarily, uh, achievement, impact on achievement. While that's interesting and important, we also want to know the impact on the students' experience. Uh, cause that is a really important part of our strategic planning goal that students are feeling connected, respected and valued in the school. So how can we measure that by virtue of the participants in the Invention Land course? Or the, you know, how IT timed helped kids feel, you know, more, uh, independent in their independence and choosing what to do with that time. Okay? So think about measurements so that you'll be able to talk about the, the changes. Okay?
And, and benchmarks through. And I know you kind of mentioned it that, you know, we'd be looking at each grading period and so forth. But again, uh, I imagine somewhere down as we get more into meet of it, we'll also be looking to see with our, our community, our families. Uh, as the parent side would be, their thoughts of it too. I mean, that's a given from us, but, so they, the parents will know too that their input will be valued as we move forward with this.
Yep.
And thank you, everybody. Very exciting. And then I, I think everyone up here at least appreciates it. I don't know if any Buffy or Darren, any comments?
Microphone.
Mike. Green. There we go. He's ready now.
And you hear me now, Kim?
Yes.
Anyway, so I, I'm gonna be able to live with them through this whole process. So I'm excited about, um, seeing their growth and, and what comes out. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, agreed. I think this all sounds fantastic. I'm really excited for Invention Land. I'm pretty jealous that I didn't have that in the sixth grade because I definitely would have loved it and didn't get something similar till college, actually. Um, so I, I think that's a good indication that my chemical engineering program has something that sounds rather similar to what we're offering in sixth grade. Um, and I think the, the 18-minute Independence Time will be fantastic too. I mean, I can think of how many times I wish that my schedule just coincided with my different teachers. And that's often a, a big hurdle that students have to jump through just getting the time with the teacher available. So I think that'll be really beneficial. I appreciate all your time that you put into this.
Mr. Scalzo, your meeting.
Okay. Well, this I think concludes the curriculum committee meeting. Uh, I think.
Any comments?
That's what I was getting to, yes.
Any public comments? Okay. I'll turn it over to Mr. Mo Drack.
Thank you, everybody.